Everyone, that's loud. We have everyone in place now. Thank you all for being here. I would now like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Soller, when you're ready.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Soller.
Mr. Riffle. Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And I will ask, Mr. Riffle, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Stand if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then we will move right along to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. WJCC values the expertise of educators from various backgrounds and pathways who bring real-life experience to the classroom. If you have considered a career in teaching, we really want to meet with you. Join us and spread the word on Thursday, April 11th at 5:00 p.m. at James Player Middle School. You can come and learn about multiple options for earning teaching credentials to fit every timeline and budget. WJCC Schools Stitution Assistance Program, including full reimbursement for some of the programs we offer. Ways prospective teachers can be hired to teach while they still, while they earn their teaching credentials. Also, this is the last chance for incoming kindergarten families to register for the Family Academy webinar, "Kindergarten Kickoff: Your Guide to a Great Start." During the webinar, participants will receive information about the kindergarten registration process, including eligibility criteria, health and transportation information, and a sneak peek of what to expect at the Kindergarten Registration Family Fest in April. Visit wjccschools.org to register for tomorrow's webinar. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And now we're moving on to Schools Spotlight. Tonight, we are highlighting... Oh, I'm sorry. Pause that. I forgot the board member reports.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to recognize CAC, our Special Education Advisory Committee, for all of their hard work in organizing and hosting the Family Fun Day that occurred on Saturday to celebrate all families and to bring awareness to disability awareness and advocacy this month. So, and I also want to encourage everybody out there, even if you're not necessarily a family with a child that has special education needs, that we all should be involved in advocating for special education. And so, the next meeting is Thursday, April 11th at 6:30. And then, there's one more meeting for the year on May 9th. So, I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Ms. Chen and Mrs. Donner. Did you have a report?
Yes. Mrs. Ordigo and I had the school liaison meeting, and that is meeting between us, representing the school board, the Board of Supervisors, two members, and two members from City Council. During that meeting, we talked about the budget and our thought process around it. We also use those meetings as an opportunity to hear what some of their questions and concerns are and to just build relationships with the localities. That was then followed by our joint meeting, which was last Friday. That's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Anyone else? Now, we will move on to our Schools Spotlight, and tonight, we are highlighting Laurel Lane Elementary School. Walk-up music tonight.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron, good evening. It is my pleasure to share with you about Josh's Kindness Squad at Laurel Lane Elementary School. In 2022, Jennifer Miller, a member of our staff, saw the many ways that acts of kindness were promoted and carried out throughout the school community. She inquired about formalizing the concept to recognize the kind acts occurring. Our Student Council Association officers and representatives were also talking about these ideas with the school sponsors. One of the student council officers, Joshua Peck, was steadfast in seeking ways to perform those kind acts and service projects. He'd helped his third-grade teacher, along with classmates, with the creation of and the upkeep of a memorial garden for one of our beloved teachers who had passed away unexpectedly. He came to the office daily, seeking ways to help with any task or needs. He also would check in with our administrative team, ensuring we were taking care of business with activities and initiatives. We began to coin him "our third administrator." Unexpectedly, we lost Josh on December 30th, 2022. Trying to navigate this loss was and remains a process for all of us. With his family's permission, we had greater direction about how we wanted to remember and celebrate a young man's life who exemplified kindness, service, and making a positive difference for others. In January 2023, we named the Acts of Kindness group Josh's Kindness Squad. I'm proud for you all to see and learn about how our kindness club works in the video that's coming up. At the end of last month, the House of Delegates honored Joshua by approving and sharing a resolution presented to his family. We will do something locally at a later time, but it is our hope that his family knows, through this tremendous loss, the incredible impact Josh has had in our school community and beyond. Josh's mom, who is amazing and a member of our staff, Christina, is here this evening. Again, daily, we hope our penguins, the adults and children, are learning about the importance and power of kindness, even with a smile, because kindness costs nothing. So, without further ado, I hope that you all will be able to take a look at this video and see about how we are promoting care, engagement, and a sense of belonging for each person that enters our campus. Thank you.
When we're teaching our kids about the Penguin Way, when we're teaching them about being polite, positive, prepared, and productive, all of that encompasses kindness. When you can put a smile on someone's face, when you can make someone feel better, and it doesn't have to cost a thing, it can be as easy as a smile.
I make a list in the beginning of the year with a kindness challenge for each week, so as many classes can participate as possible. We've done some wonderful things. The students really enjoy writing messages of thanks to our staff.
It makes me feel very good about myself, because then that creates kindness for everybody else, and that once I pass kindness on to that person, they'll pass it on to more people. And hopefully, that makes our school better.
I feel the kids taking pride in the things that they do as they make other people feel good.
Across the board, every class that I've seen do this has really enjoyed themselves. Oftentimes, we don't give our kids chances to give back or to show kindness, and having this chance at school is great.
Kindness can go a long way, and it can make somebody's day very easily, and I hope it does, because kindness is something that you should give out without expecting to receive back, but still expect the other person to be happy because of it.
We have had buddy classes go in and read with one another, and it's such a great feeling for the older kids to be able to come in and feel like they're helping the younger kids with their learning, and it is really building the community here at Laurel Lane.
They bombarded one of the cores with kind sticky notes, just with like sweet, sweet messages and these little dinosaurs everywhere. Some of the kids still have the little sticky notes, since you are loved or you matter. We want that type of joy. We want that type of happiness. The saying, "Tis better to give than receive." There's something about being able to give and expecting nothing in return that is a really cool thing. I mean, it's just teaching good citizenship. I've enjoyed seeing the kids excited about making one another happy and excited.
It makes me feel absolutely incredible, because I just love seeing people having smiles on their faces. It just makes my heart warm and happy.
Thank you, Dr. Swan. Thank you for sharing that very inspiring story. And... As a mom, I just want to express my condolences to Josh's mom and thank her for the amazing gift she gave the world that still lives on. All right. And now, I will gladly turn it over to the vice chair.
I'll step in and use recognition.
Yes, we have a special recognition this evening, and so I will turn it over to our vice chair, Mrs. Donner.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Though this award is not a surprise, the school board would like to honor Dr. Heron, who late last month was named Region Two Superintendent of the Year by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. Not only is Dr. Heron a student-centered leader, she cares deeply about the WJCC schools' team and community. She is a fierce advocate for staff and education and the education profession, working to build teacher form and support employee form during her tenure to ensure direct lines of communication with staff. Programs developed or expanded under her leadership, such as mentoring and professional learning for novice and veteran educators, the exceptional games to celebrate the abilities of all, and investing in technology resources, demonstrate her commitment to continuous improvement and dedication to elevating the working and learning environment at WJCC schools. Dr. Heron is now under consideration for Virginia Superintendent of the Year. We congratulate her on this accomplishment, wish her well in the next step, and thank her for her hard work and commitment. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This concludes recognitions for this evening.
If I could just make a quick comment, Madam Chair. You know, no leader is ever recognized for what they do. It's for what everybody does within the system. And so, any recognition that we have, and especially this one, is for everyone. It's for the board, it's for senior staff, it's for every teacher in the room tonight, every person in ops, because ultimately, it takes a whole team, and I'm proud to have an amazing team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, and we're glad you are superintendent. And now, we will move on to public comment. And again, I will turn it over to Mrs. Donner.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner.
Our first speaker is Leanne Libler.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss my concerns about the attendance policy that's been implemented this year based on how it affects our children who are participating in travel sports and how that reflects on their excused or unexcused absences of school. I have a letter written. My daughter swims, and I have a letter from her coach, and I had asked her to help us out here, because we've been called for an attendance meeting, because we have had to have some absences due to some swim meets. And so, I'd like to read that now. This is a letter from our head coach, Morgan Cordell, of 757 Swim. It says, "To whom it may concern, I hope this letter finds you well. My name is Morgan Cordell, head coach and CEO of 757 Swim. I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the current attendance policy within the WJCC school system. While I appreciate the school system's dedication to creating an environment that fosters academic excellence and personal growth, I believe that the current policy falls short in supporting students who participate in sports outside of the school sanctioned programs. It is important to acknowledge that college recruitment often extends beyond high school sports, and many student athletes find themselves excelling in club sports and travel competitions. These students are not only achieving success in their chosen sports, but also demonstrating outstanding academic performance and involvement in various extracurricular activities. However, the current attendance policy fails to recognize and accommodate the unique demands placed on these students. One significant disparity arises from the fact that student athletes participating in school sports are granted excused absences to attend competitions. On the other hand, their counterparts engaged in club sports, which may not even be offered through a school, are not afforded the same."
But that's the time limit, Mrs. Libler. You can, if you have some written statement, you can give it to the clerk, and it will be entered in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Allison Sigler.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Sigler. I'm an active-duty military spouse here in Williamsburg, Virginia. I have three teenagers in WJCC schools. In December, I was required to attend an attendance meeting for my daughter, who's a freshman at Jamestown High School, for having five unexcused absences, two of which were for travel sports. She's a competitive equestrian and competes at the state level in Virginia. One was when my husband returned from deployment last September. That was also listed as unexcused, and the other two were for a family trip in December. I have in my hands here deployment orders for my husband, once again, who leaves next week. He's an emergency medicine physician with the United States Army stationed at Fort Eustis, Virginia. He deploys next week. This deployment has been highly publicized since President Biden announced it in his presidential address a couple of weeks ago. His brigade is the Seventh Transportation Brigade at Fort Eustis, and they have been tasked with building the floating causeway to Gaza to deliver humanitarian aid. This is a three-to-six-month mission. According to your current policy, I can't take my children out of school to spend time with him before he deploys, where it will be deemed an unexcused absence. Virginia has 77,000 military children. We are in the top five every year. We have more military children than Georgia and North Carolina, and they both have written into their state and district levels that military dependents can have up to five excused absences on the back or front end of a deployment, of a military deployment. This is the first district I've ever lived in that doesn't have a policy to support military dependents in this way. I would like to respectfully request that this district and the school board consider adopting such a policy. I understand that this may need to go to the state level, and I'm happy to advocate at the state level for that. I really appreciate your time. I've also brought some documentation of what other districts and states and how they've outlined it, if I can get that to someone.
Please do. That's our clerk, Ms. Sigler, and thank you for your family's service.
Our next speaker is Rachel Dreslawski.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Dresdowski, and I am the parent of a freshman at Jamestown High School. I would like to start off just by acknowledging the work of the board, our superintendent, principal Townsend, the teachers, the administrators. We have such a great school, such a great district, and our community is really, really fortunate. I'm a little bit teary from Allison's speech. I apologize. The reason that we're all here tonight is to talk about the concerns we have about the attendance policy. My daughter plays sports in national competitions. She also maintains a 4.0 GPA at Jamestown, and that takes a lot of work. She had a severe allergic reaction this semester, which caused her to miss some school while she was recovering, and she has four appointments coming up. With her travel for sports coming up, she's going to be butting up against these attendance policies as well, and she could be facing failure in classes where she has a 4.0. We communicate with the school. I let them know what's happening. She communicates with their teachers, and it's just that she works so hard, and her and other students now are potentially subject to disciplinary measures if they're missing school to compete in events or other important events in their life. I understand that there's regulations from the Commonwealth, and those are being implemented across the state, but we're hopeful that the one-size-fits-all approach that's being taken with the students and absences in the district can be reconsidered. So, it takes into account the student's performance, how they're doing in school, and whether or not the travel is really for a justified reason versus, you know, staying home to play video games or maybe something else that's not bettering their future or furthering family connections. Thank you for your time, and especially thank you all for you do for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dresdowski.
Our next speaker is Andrew Kason.
Hello. Good evening. I'm very happy to report that I am speaking on behalf of 800 employees that have now signed authorization cards electing WJCEA as their employee representative. Teachers have already said with a collective voice that we need collective bargaining, and we have seen more bus drivers and teachers sign cards. They too are well on their way to their majorities. What WJCEA has been able to accomplish is a remarkable feat of organizing and education. Members are organized and ready to bargain. We have our list of issues. We've gone through hours of venting and conversation, and we are ready to bargain in good faith and for the common good. You can't afford to ignore our requests. Many of us are quitting mid-year, and the division struggles to fill vacancies with qualified teachers. Please, act soon. Form a joint committee with WJCEA and all other stakeholders. We educators, we don't shy away from challenges, and I sure don't teach students to shy away from challenges either. We should go about changing the status quo so that we can save our profession and make this a truly premier school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
The next speaker is Jessica Anderson.
Good evening, school board. And Dr. Heron, my name is Jessica Anderson. I am both a WJCC employee as well as a WJC school parent. I'm here this evening to discuss a couple of points. First, like the previous speaker, I'd ask the school board to join a, form a joint committee with the WJCEA to ensure we have the ability to collective bargain and have a seat at the table. I think there's a real concern around us not having a voice within things that affect our career path and ability to be the best we can for our students and our families. I would also ask you to work with the other local government entities to ensure that we get an additional 5% pay raise in the upcoming school year and make us a little more competitive as compared to our neighboring districts. In the last two weeks, I've seen at least four WJCC employees leaving the division, two immediately and two that are going to end their term at the end of the school year. Two of those individuals left to a neighboring district for better economic stability, and one of them left the state for a better financial opportunity. And this is a trend that we're seeing, and we really don't have the ability to lose, two of which of these people have more than 30 years of experience in WJCC. That is expertise that is now walking out of the door. We can't afford to continue to lose teachers and educators and staff at this rate and be successful as a division. So, I really hope that you look to that and think on that as you're talking about pay increases, as we're talking about collective bargaining. I also want to address something as a parent of someone who's at LHS, who my children have ran for LHS for over six years collectively, and the track is abysmal. I know that it was on the schedule a while back. It feels like it's kind of fallen at the wayside. There is literal growth coming through it. Lines one, two, and three are patched down to literally asphalt. The other school divisions, and we have a very competitive team, both cross-country and track, and we do not have an actual place to run. And I finally want to say, I recognize the shortfalls that you deal with with the state when it comes to attendance, and I just want to say, I know you all are doing your best. So, anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Our next speaker is Cara McLean. We have quite a few, so after her will be Marge Sardi. Marco, I'm sorry, Marco. Trying to read handwriting. I was like, oh, his wife is here. I'm sorry.
Except to the clerk.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm concerned about the codes and guidelines of Virginia and the Williamsburg, the WJCC policies not being followed for the abstinence-based family life education class. The code of Virginia says that a complete copy of all printed material and the audio and visual material must be available to parents for in-person review upon request and be kept in the school library or office during school hours before and during the school year. When I went to my son's school on 3/7/2024, I was asked to see the curriculum, and the binder had a letter on the front from 41723, which stated principles. "We are providing each school with a binder of the family life curriculum relevant to the school's grade span." But when I opened the binder, there was material for sixth grade and 10th grade, and it was from the year 1990. So, yesterday, I went to one of the middle schools in town, and they had the same cover letter, 41723, and the same sixth grade and 10th grade material. They did have a little, instead of a big binder, they had a tiny, well, manila folder with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and I know that's not all the material, because I've looked at the material so often. And so, they did not have the complete material either, and there was no computer setup so that the audio and visual material could be looked at. so that the audio and visual material could be looked at online, and the principals did not, at either school, and the principals did not know that they were supposed to be having this at either of those schools. And they also did not know that under the cover letter was material that was not current. Everyone I talked to have had great difficulty in looking in the material, even though it is available online on the WJCC website, and they haven't, a lot have not even known that it was there to look through. Another concern is Section Eight of the Board of Education Guidelines, which says, "A plan for teaching sensitive content in gender-separated classes shall be announced publicly, but students in sixth through high school are taught gender combined," and parents have not known this and have been horrified.
Thank you, Mrs. McLean.
And thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Up next is Marco Sardi, and following him will be Summer Kirkpatrick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Marco Sardi, and I'm the president of WJCEA and a teacher here at James Blair. In previous discussions, there was debate over how much of a raise we could provide staff with and a reasonable increase to our request to the funding partners. The three percent originally designated in Dr. Heron's budget draft was based on a negligible increase, assuming from the state to support our SOQ staff. The difference between what was being provided and what we were asking for at that time was about two percent. We now know that state funding supports an increase of three percent SOQ staff. I would request the same consideration be taken for an increase of about two percent from there to fill our needs. These are not wants. Hampton Schools released an increase of about four-point-eight percent to their educators for the coming year, so a five percent increase would encourage our staff to be remaining for next year and would provide a means of filling currently vacant positions like bus drivers and therapists. I hope you've received the results of the survey done by WJCEA to help provide additional insight into the values and needs of your employees. I encourage you to read their honest feedback and to find the value in requesting those needs from those who try their best to provide for our students their very best every day. As I'm sure you're all aware, the release of the feasibility study has presented an opportunity to reflect on how we can support our students in a collaborative system, and that will take all of us, whether it is employees, administrators, community members, or local governing bodies. I feel strongly that we have an opportunity to think of ways to be bold in supporting educators and to find new ways to meet the needs of our joint community. It is now more than ever that we must come together and work more clearly as a team between educators and administration to find these solutions in retaining good staff and exploring solutions. A joint committee between administrative team, the school board, and WJCEA will facilitate these conversations and can be another tool to forming a better community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi.
Summer Kirkpatrick is our next speaker, followed by Lindsay Taylor.
Hello, my name is Summer Kirkpatrick, and I'm the mother of a first grader at Matthew Whaley Elementary. In January, my child struggled to go to school in the mornings. He told me that he felt sick, and he didn't want to go to school. Mom, don't make me go to school. In February, I found out that my child's class had been evacuated multiple times. I found this out because another child told their parent, and that parent shared it with me. Knowing this, I asked him, "Do you feel safe at school?" No, I don't. In March, my child's first grade teacher resigned. He now has a long-term substitute for the rest of the school year. A study was done in California and Oregon in twenty-twenty, following the effects of extreme behavior on kindergarten classes. The study found that eight percent of schools contacted parents to let them know, whereas seventy percent of parents contacted the schools to voice concern. I believe this study highlights the communication discrepancy I experienced at Matthew Whaley. I found out about the evacuations from another parent who heard it from their child. I do not believe that first graders are reliable communicators. As a parent, I would like better communication from my child's school when he's exposed to violent behavior so that I can help him process his trauma. I can't help my child if I don't know what he is experiencing. I urge the school district to examine its policies regarding crisis communications, specifically repeated incidents that result in classroom evacuations. Please provide guidelines for teachers and staff on effective communication following disruptive incidents. I do believe that Matthew Whaley has worked hard to keep my child safe and that he is at a safe school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkpatrick.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Taylor, and she will be followed by Rachel Moore.
Hello. I am the vice president of WJCEA, and I work at James River Elementary School. First, I would like to ask that you create a joint committee, school board representatives and WJCEA representatives, so we can create collective bargaining agreement together. Our goals are transparency and to work together to come up with something that works for everyone. In fact, some of what we want to do is to codify some of the wonderful things the board and Dr. Heron are already doing for us, so let's get that in writing. Second, I want to thank you for advocating for a salary increase above the originally asked-for three percent. I love my job, and I love my kids, but it's becoming, or has become financially irresponsible for me to continue teaching. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from William &amp; Mary, which I'm still paying for, and ten years of teaching experience, and I'm still making less than my college classmates' starting salaries nearly twenty years ago. I know you can't compete with the private sector due mostly to systematic problems that we can't fix here today, and I hope that that soon will change, but until then, be bold, be bolder than our neighbors. I currently make fifty-seven thousand, five-hundred-seventy-seven dollars. In Newport News, Hampton, York, and Charles City, I'd be making more than sixty thousand dollars. If you can't stay competitive with our surrounding divisions, then you're asking every one of your employees to make a sacrifice to stay in this community that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
The next speaker is Rachel Moore, followed by Aileen Parm.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. My name is Rachel Moore. This is my eighteenth year teaching in WJCC, and I have loved almost every moment. And I'm also the parent of a current WJCC student as well as one who has graduated and one who received GED through our school system, so I have a variety of perspectives. I'm here this evening because I truly believe that we share a common mission and a common commitment to providing our students and our children a quality education in these especially challenging times. To this end, we request the school board to form a joint committee with WJCEA to draft a collective bargaining resolution. This partnership will positively contribute to retention of quality educators to serve our students. It's crucial, as you've heard from others, that our district remain competitive by offering teachers wages that fairly compensate them for the hours required by their contract and also as an acknowledgement for the many, many, many hours we all put in beyond our contract hours, because we care about our students, we care about supporting them, ensuring their wellness and success. So I thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate your time and commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Our next speaker is Aileen Parm, followed by Lori Cardina.
Good evening, Madam Chair, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Aileen Parm. I am a WJCEA member and a social studies teacher at Jamestown. I am here today to ask you to support an ad hoc committee with WJCEA to discuss and develop a joint resolution for collective bargaining. Furthermore, I would like to encourage the board in their conversations regarding the budget that includes staff salary, pay adjustments, and health insurance premiums. I thank you in encouraging the conversation on a five percent raise, as like my colleagues here in WJCC, you know, I too have two degrees from two different institutions and currently work a second job to maintain living where I am and pay my bills. And in our division, we will need to continue to work hard to keep our current teachers, our veteran teachers like myself, and bring in more teachers as well. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Parm.
And our next speaker is Lori Cardina.
Good evening. My name is Lori Cardenas, and I am a speech-language pathologist. I've been practicing for the last twenty-eight years in the school system, and I've been working here in Williamsburg. I've lived in Williamsburg for the last nineteen years and working for WJCC for the last seventeen years. So I love Williamsburg, James City County Schools, and I love, I love what we do. And I, right now, for the last fourteen years, I've been a preschool therapist, working with all of the bright beginning students and really helping our really needy two-to-five-year-olds try to make a better start. So I really appreciate that you're here. I appreciate all you try to do for our students and our staff, and I am just asking you to please consider forming a joint committee so we can form together as a unit and so we can try to like help the school board, help the staff, help the superintendent. So when we go and request things from the board of supervisors, we can get more backing, and we can get the parents, there's lots of parents that support us. So we can really try to save education in America, because we all are educators, we love our students, we love educating them, and we are just really failing in many ways, and we don't want to do that, and we know of the problems that we are having. So the major thing that we have is the lack of manpower and the lack of therapists and being able to keep people on staff. So that always goes back, unfortunately, to money, but there's also other things we can do too that don't cost money, like work environment or e-commute days. There's all kinds of things, and we all have such great ideas, like together, we can really make a difference and try to really help education, especially in Williamsburg, James City County, but in America. This is a passionate plea from all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Cardina.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers, speaker cards for the evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Thank you to all of our speakers who came out tonight. We don't, as you know, respond to each of you, but we do listen to you, and we appreciate your time and your comments. We will now move on to the consent agenda. It is a little lengthy, so bear with me as I read through these items. We are looking at item seven-point-zero-one, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll, February twenty-twenty-four. Seven-point-zero-two, approval of minutes from twenty-twenty, sorry, February twentieth, twenty-four meeting. Seven-point-zero-three, approval of minutes from March fifth, twenty-four meeting. Seven-point-zero-four, approval of resolution R-nine-twenty-four, month of the military child. Seven-point-zero-five, approval of resolution R-ten-twenty-four, school library month. Seven-point-six, approval of resolution R-eleven-twenty-four, public school volunteer week. Seven-point-zero-seven, approval of resolution R-twelve-twenty-four, VSB-A twenty-twenty-four, business honor roll. Seven-point-zero-eight, approval of revisions to policy EB-B threat assessment teams. Seven-point-zero-nine, approval of revisions to policy EEBA authorized use of vehicles. Seven-point-one-zero, approval of revisions to policy GA personnel policies goals. Seven-point-one-one, approval of retirement of policy GBBD, non-instructional use of social media. Seven-point-one-two, approval of revisions to policy GCPA, reduction in workforce. Item seven-point-one-three, approval of creation of policy GBG, staff participation in political activities. Seven-point-one-four, approval of revisions to policy KHE, political activity. And last but not least, seven-point-one-five, approval of revisions to policy KNA, violent sex offenders on school property. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Ms. Aller, when you're ready.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, moving on to our individual action items. Item eight-point-zero-one, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Ms. Aller.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
We will move on to eight-point-zero-two, approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget, and before I ask for a motion, I'm going to ask Dr. Heron to give us a brief update on some numbers that have come in since our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing is going to present some slides following the board conversation at the last meeting. As of yet, we don't have a Calc tool to give you an exact number of monies that we're going to receive from the state, but she will also speak to that. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
I need to read my disclosure statement first. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the FY twenty-five school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. On February twentieth, we presented the superintendent's proposed budget, and during discussions at the March fifth work session, there was a desire of the board to make some modifications to that proposal. This evening, I will walk through those proposed modifications prior to the board voting on the budget. Superintendent's proposed budget totaled one-hundred-seventy-nine million, nine-hundred-fifteen-thousand, and the proposed modifications that the board is considering include changing the salary increase from an average three percent to an average four-and-a-half percent for all staff at a cost of one-point-eight million, increasing the division's healthcare contribution by setting the rates based on the Key Advantage five-hundred plan for a cost of six-hundred-thousand, and lastly, changing the bilingual language specialist from a half-time to full-time at a cost of forty-five thousand. This would bring the board's operating budget total to one-hundred-eighty-two million, three-hundred-sixty thousand. Last month, we shared this chart that shows a comparison of current year employee rates for health insurance as compared to estimated rates for next year, with the estimated rates being based on the Centerra Health Plan, which has an increased cost of three-point-four percent, and that increase is then shared with employees on a seventy percent WJCC, thirty percent employee split. This is a sampling of the rate sheet, and as an example, currently, an employee with a Key Advantage five-hundred plan with comprehensive dental pays five-hundred-seventy dollars per month. Under this rate plan, the estimated cost next year would be seven-hundred-twenty-five dollars for a monthly increase of one-hundred-fifty-five dollars. One of the modifications the board is considering this evening is to base the division's healthcare rate on the increase in the Key Advantage five-hundred plan, which has been our practice in past years. This table shows a comparison of current year employee rates for health insurance as compared to estimated rates for next year. The estimated rates are based on the Key Advantage five-hundred plan, which has an increased cost of nine percent, and that increase is then shared with the employees on a seventy percent WJCC, thirty percent employee split. Under this scenario, an employee currently on the Key Advantage five-hundred comprehensive plan with family coverage would pay an estimated six-hundred-thirty-two dollars per month or an increase of sixty-two dollars over the current year. As you can see, since the Centerra increase is three-point-four percent, if an employee is currently on the Centerra plan and remains in that plan, then their monthly cost would go down based on these estimated rates. Taking this a step further, on this slide are a couple of examples of what the potential four-and-a-half percent salary increase would look like alongside- alongside a proposed annual increase in healthcare costs and our Centerra HMO Plan, as well as our Key Advantage $250 deductible plan, again with a 70/30 split based on the Key Advantage 500 Plan premium increase. We have included two teacher examples, one at the beginning of the master's pay scale and one at the midpoint of the master's pay scale. We also have included two examples from a support grade six employee, one at the beginning of the scale and one at the midpoint of the pay scale. This is a best-case and worst-case scenario based on healthcare choice, with the dark blue line representing an employee with a Centerra HMO and employee-only coverage, and the turquoise-colored line representing an employee with the Key Advantage 250 Plan with family coverage, our most expensive option. As an example, on the far left of the slide is a step-zero teacher. And the range when comparing a salary raise with the increased healthcare cost is between $1,408 and $2,764. Healthcare is an employee choice and the division offers several options for our employees to choose from. As we shared last month, in an effort to help our employees better understand their various health plan options, we intend to operate division-wide healthcare and additional educational opportunities. We want sure all employees have the opportunity to participate so they can select the plan that best suits their healthcare needs. This slide shows what the modifications to the Superintendent's Proposed Budget would mean in regards to a funding request of our localities. Contained within the Superintendent's Proposed Budget was a request for just under 8.1 million. And with the proposed modifications that the board is considering this evening, the revised amount would be 10.5 million. As we shared at last week's joint meeting with our funding partners, based on a preliminary estimate provided by the state for the General Assembly's budget, we may see an increase in state funding of approximately 4 million, which would mean an adjusted local funding request of 6.5 million. We expect to have the budget Calc tool by Monday. So we would ask that the board authorize Dr. Heron to reduce the request of the localities by that increased amount of state funding before we transmit the budget request to the localities next week. And this slide shows the total of all funds, including operating grants, state-operated programs, and child nutrition services funds, which amounts to a total of 199,646,000 for fiscal year 2025 with the proposed modifications presented this evening. And that is all the information that I have to share. If there are any questions? Mr. Riffel?
Could you just tell us how much of a percentage we are asking? Like, is it a 7.8% on top of our, you know, I mean, we talked about this in our previous meeting. Is it 7.8% on top of the operating budget?
For the locality request?
Yeah, yeah.
I have to go get my computer.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry.
I don't have a calculator up here with me.
Circle back to that maybe you can.
Yeah, I think it's like I'm trying to point out that we are doing a substantial amount for our current budget. And that's, you know, kind of why we're kind of getting to this point and when we're going to approve this budget. I think it's important to kind of share that information with the public because it is a lot more than typical years you do.
A typical year is about 2.5 million, 2.5, which equates to 2.5% that the, in a normal year, which would be several years ago now, that's on average what we get from the localities. And so if we take it in, in right numbers, Ms. Ewing, I guess, 10 million is about 10% of an increase from the locality. Is that correct?
That is.
Is that Irish math?
A 10.5 million request for next year would be a 10.3% increase.
That's Irish math works again.
So I, are there specific questions for Ms. Ewing from board members? This should all be information known to us. Largely was for the publics to understand what our thinking was over the next week. So if there are no questions from Ms. Ewing, I would like to ask for a motion and then we can continue to have discussion before we approve it. Is that all good?
Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion to approve the 2025 budget?
Madam Chair, I move to amend the Superintendent's Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Budget as discussed this evening for a total amount of 1,999, sorry, 199,646,000, which includes 182,360,000 for the operating fund, 8,0118,700 for the grants fund, 1,179,800 for the state operating programs fund, and 7,887,500 for the child nutrition services fund and to authorize Dr. Heron to reduce the operating requests to the localities by the additional state revenue that we expect to receive based on the General Assembly's budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. And now I will open the floor for any discussion, if there are any comments or questions that board members want to say at this point. And then I will summarize at the end what we did over the last few weeks. Are there any, any comments that anyone would like to make? Mr. Hoseng?
Thank you. I've got four separate topics to discuss regarding the budget. Again, we've, this board has gone over this budget quite a bit. And there's just some issues that I still have some concerns with that, in my opinion, we're not getting the full story from either the Superintendent or the administration. The first issue is going to be this 30-minute SEL training that's going to be required for teachers next year. We've had multiple requests from teachers, from parents, from myself as to what this is going to entail. And we haven't received any firm commitment exactly yet what this is going to be about. The first issue I have with this is why are we wasting half an hour of the school day for these issues when our students right now are failing in SEL testing for the state? We are currently going to be doubling the math and English classes next year for the sixth graders because our school system is not, our students are not performing well on those tests. So if we're doubling the time that we're taking for math and English, why are we taking away a half hour of this school week for students to learn basically how to be nice to each other? That should be something the parents should be teaching them, not the teachers. Second, I asked previously what this would cost to our school system to implement this. And I was told that it wasn't going to cost anything. I believe that this is not the full story as to the cost of this, which is going to be a common theme in my comments. Teachers will be spending, again according to what we've been told, 30 minutes to teach this subject. So that's 30 minutes per week per teacher for the full school year of them taking time out of their day to teach the SEL training. That doesn't entail time for preparation. So I'm going to be easy and just say the teacher's going to take 30 minutes to prepare for this lesson. So that's an hour each week that a teacher's going to be taking away from teaching their students. And again, if you look, if you basically take an hour for a teacher, multiply that by the number of teachers who are going to be teaching this, multiplied by the number of weeks that we have in the school year, that's more than zero. That's a significant amount of money that our school system is paying to teach this for a program that's not even required by the state. The state requires us for the SEL training or SEL testing. And we should be focusing our time, our money on that aspect of it and not this SEL training. Third issue or third part is teachers have asked what this training is going to entail. And the last that I've heard is they haven't received anything regarding this training. That may or may not be true. The time when the teachers asked, they were not given anything specific regarding this training. If we're going to be requiring this for our teachers, that should be something that the teachers should have before we approve this in our budget. The next issue I'm going to discuss is block scheduling. We've had multiple teachers talk to us about how this is, how they are going to accommodate students and teachers, since this will only leave one elective for students to take next year in middle school or at least in the sixth grade. With the doubling up of math classes, English classes, and getting all the other required classes in, it leaves teachers with, or it leaves students, I should say, with one elective. Now, my daughters have gone through, sorry about that, the school system. And they were allowed to take multiple electives. And I can say that my daughters received a much better education because they were able to take multiple electives. They were able to take multiple art classes and choir classes. With the block scheduling that is now being scheduled, our students aren't going to be getting that full education. They're going to be losing that where they can only be taken one elective. Further, we're forcing our teachers to deal with larger classrooms to accommodate the students. So if someone wants to take choir or an art class, that class is going to be bigger because that's going to be one of the few electives that those students can take. So the teachers are going to be forced to have bigger classrooms. Now, we were told a couple of weeks ago or a month ago that that final block may be split into two. But we've heard nothing since. We've heard nothing regarding whether that was going to be split so that students could take two different electives. Now, while that would be a great thing for the students to have, that opportunity that gives them the multiple times where they could take a class or an elective. But right now, again, like I said, we haven't heard anything where that's going to be something that the students could do. That would also give the teachers an opportunity to teach a smaller class and also an opportunity to have more students in another classroom where they could, the students could take multiple electives. Now, Ms. Henley and Ms. Chen received an email last week from a middle school teacher asking about additional funding for a fine arts program in middle and high school. With this block scheduling, there will be fewer students taking drama. So fewer students can be available for a production. And sadly, there may be no need for an increase in the funding for fine arts. And with less middle school students taking drama in middle school, that's going to leave a void in future years in high school. If they're not going to get that training in middle school, if they're not going to get the love for a certain arts class in middle school, they're not going to take it in high school. There's a good chance they're not going to. If we want to keep these students entertained, if we want to keep these students involved in our classrooms in our schools, this is something we should be focusing on and giving them to, giving them the best opportunity they can for the best education they can. And finally, we have middle school students at this point in class for over 90 minutes. And in my personal opinion, that's not conducive for children at that age. I've talked to a lot of teachers. I've talked to a lot of parents. And they agree that having a child sit for 90 minutes in a classroom is not going to be a good thing. So keeping that, keeping with current schedule would be much more cost-effective. And if we aren't getting information on how we're going to proceed with this, then I don't know how we can approve the budget for the next school year. Regarding employer raises, I asked a couple of weeks ago, hypothetical, about what percentage of a raise would employees receive or teachers receive if the federal government provided us no additional funding? If the state government provided us no additional funding? If our localities provided us no additional funding? And I was told that teachers would receive a 0% raise. That, however, is also incorrect. Because in the response, it talked about teachers moving up in years of service. Now, if a teacher moves up from three years of service to four years of service, there is an increase in the salary of that employee. Yet, the administration refused to admit that. Now, there is some increase in the pay when an employee increases the years of work. And all I asked was that, what that increase would be in order so that we, as the board, would have a better understanding and we could notify the teachers of that pay raise. And we were not provided that information. And I think we need to be asked why we're not provided with all that information. The final issue is, an issue that's come up recently and has been approached to the administration is regarding non-English-speaking students in our schools. In recent weeks, there have been an increase in the number of non-English-speaking students starting in our schools. The students in our, currently in our schools, we're not aware of these students coming. The teachers were not aware of these students coming. And because of this, there had been upheaval in the classrooms that these students are in. I can tell you, there's been multiple issues of where the teachers have not been able to teach their class because they've been focusing on these non-English-speaking students that were brought into their classrooms unannounced. And that has caused issues regarding our students being taught later on. My daughter's not receiving some education because of the teachers spending most of their time teaching, or trying to communicate, I should say, with these non-English-speaking students. Now, I submitted school board questions along with some parents as to this issue and have not received a response back from the administration. I would like to know what is being hidden from the parents and the school board. It should be easy to provide information as to why these students are here, who they are, are they legally here? Should we, as a school district, be spending our funds, which are designated for those who are citizens in our city and county, to those who might not be here legally? Also, why are parents and teachers not notified of their arrival? It seems odd that no notification was sent out regarding this. Now, do parents and teachers not have the courtesy of a heads-up? Teachers were and still are scrambling to try and communicate with these students since they do not speak English. Now, since someone knew that they were coming, why not at the very least set up a classroom where a teacher who could effectively communicate with these students, teach them and work with them throughout the day as opposed to putting them into normal classes where they are having a serious effect on the teachers and the students that are in those classrooms?
May I ask a point of order? Just in terms of, is there a time limit per speaker for us in terms of our questions? Because there's been four questions and we usually only do three questions.
I think he's closing up.
Yep.
I think he's wrapping up. We're just going to let.
10 minutes.
I'm just going to let this wrap up and then we'll move on.
Well, and to comment on that, I don't believe that any of that's been ever.
It's 10 minutes. You're right. It was 10 minutes.
Let's just, let's just.
This is just another way that this administration is spending our funds without our approval and without advising us of this. I ask again, what else are they spending money on and what are they not telling us about? How can we approve a budget tonight when the people we're relying on for this information is not being forthright with us? Let's not be pressured into passing a budget just to pass it. We've asked for this and other people have asked for this information repeatedly and have not received anything. If our administrators aren't going to provide this to us, we cannot properly provide or approve the budget. And as a reminder, if there's a type of lawsuit that is filed against the school system, it is us, the school board, who will be liable for any issues, not the Superintendent and not the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Are there any other comments related to the budget? Mr. Riffel?
Yeah. First, I would like to thank Ms. Ewing and her team for dealing with the generous assembly or whatever else you want to call these things that are happening. This is, like I said, it is an unprecedented time in Virginia to, these funds coming from the state, whether board members agree on that or not. These are raises. These are things that will help our community. But I would like to point out to our local partners, there are things that we could be doing more to actually deal with this structure. I reviewed the state budgets and requests from our delegates and senators before arriving today to make this statement. I don't think the local partners. To make this statement, I, I don't think the local partners advocated to those, that level of funding. I think if they want to, if you spend money on other parts of your operating budgets for localities, you, you can ask for earmarks in, in that same request. And there was none from our locality partners. And so when we asked for this budget of need, I would like to point to that they didn't do that aspect of their jobs, and we're just kind of fulfilling our part of our, our role. I was going to give us in the joint comment meeting, but I didn't know that was like the time we could speak to everyone there. I'm very new to this, but I think it's important that we recognize that here at the school board level that that's not something that they did. I'm sorry for the microphone, it might not be very even helpful to use anymore. But yeah, I, I would like for us to, you have, when we have a joint meeting or things like that, we actually look into this type of work because their legislative agenda lacks anything that talked about education in ways that could actually help them. They didn't talk about a restriction or restructuring of the LCI. They didn't talk about state education insurance restructuring. They didn't ask for earmarks for schools or any of their grants or programs they've achieved. They only received one point five million dollars for a program that's going to Jamestown Island, which is in Jamestown County, but it's not a part of their local budget, it's from the state. So I think there's a way to kind of go about other parts of government using budgetary processes that would help us do our job here at the school board. And that's what I'm asking of them when we do this budget of need. I'm going to approve it, I'm all for it. I just, I want to point out there's other ways to help us alleviate this other cost. Like you could do capital L.A., ask, you can do other parts of doing, running a school system or running a, a state or local agency. So I know it's kind of weird to be like, oh, I'm voting for the budget and asking for funding partners, but it's like, reflect on that part of their job, and that's what I'm asking here today. It's a little bit important in that aspect, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Are there any other comments? No.
I do have one.
Go ahead.
As the board, as we were weighing a potential five percent increase and being thoughtful about what would serve the majority of our teachers and support staff, as Ms. Ortago and others mentioned, we spent a lot of time deliberating that and kind of landing on Mrs. Ortago's good idea.
Team effort.
But, you know, of trying to, we want to be responsive to what we heard from a number of the teachers around the importance of the health care and that transition to Cintera feeling a bit quick and not having the opportunity to truly understand what the Cintera plan would provide. And so being able to say that we hear you, and that is an important piece of it, as well as we also know it's important to have more money in your pocket in terms of that increase. And so that's where, and why we landed at the four and a half percent plus staying on the Cintera plan. So thank you, Mrs. Ortago, for that idea.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Yes, I'll just summarize the budget deliberations that the entire board went through over the last two weeks, attempting to be truly thoughtful to give the teachers as much as possible while being good stewards of, of the money that we're grateful to get from our funding partners and also listening to the responses that we did get from teachers and staff over the course of the last month that predominantly, in terms of what we received, reflected dissatisfaction with, with the health care numbers and being potentially priced out of some of the, the current plans. And so we decided, we all landed on, we had many conversations, and there were, there was a lot of good exchange and good ideas. But so what we are changing, and, and I know that, you know, Dr. Heron put together her budget based on what she knew at the time, which was just the governor's budget. And so she's also, she's in support of this plan that we're not doing this without her, you know, despite her, we're doing this now that we have some, couple, you know, a little more clarity on what, what the state's going to be able to do. So we are proposing a four and a half percent salary increase plus carrying seventy percent of the nine percent health care increase versus the smaller one, which is the same, same percentage that we covered of the same plan as last year. And I'd also like to point out that, that already in the budget, there were step increases for several, several positions. So in all in all, we are trying to put the, to the best use possible for as many people as possible and where the need is greatest, that was our thought process. And so that's why we have landed on this, this decision along with, I will mention, the Dr. Cavazos' request to have a full-time bilingual specialist. I think we recognize that that is very necessary. I think Mr. Hosang just pointed that out as well. So we, we have increased that to a full-time position. So those are the, the three changes, if you will, the board is proposing with, with full agreement and blessing from our superintendent. So I hope that that is clear to the viewing public. And so since we have a motion on the floor, if there are no other comments, Ms. Aller, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
No.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Um, sorry, and Mrs. Ortago?
Aye. Mrs. Ortago, if I could just have a moment, please?
Oh, of course.
I just want to really thank Ms. Ewing and her staff and all the senior staff for the incredible amount of information that was brought to the board in a very transparent fashion to present a budget of need to our localities. And I know the board really appreciates all your work as well in getting us thus far and the way in which we've approached it, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Heron. We, we do thank you for, and your team, Ms. Ewing and, and all the senior staff that contribute to, you know, all of our questions. We think it's just a question, and, and for you, that's maybe a whole day of work. So we, we really do appreciate that to help us make the best decision possible.
All right, I will move on to item eight point zero three. Approval of purchase request for security camera upgrades. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request for security camera upgrades using Optech contract number twenty-one dash one-five-zero-one-nine for a total cost of two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred sixty-five.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen and Mr. Riffle. Ms. Aller? Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner? Mrs. Hosang?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Hosang, I'm sorry. Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
And Mrs. Ortago?
Aye.
Item eight point zero four, approval of purchase request of laptops for elementary student use. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request of seven hundred and fifty-two laptops for elementary student use from Lenovo using the NCPA slash Omni contract number zero-one dash one-four-six for a total cost of three hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second? Mr. Riffle, thank you, Mr. Riffle? Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
And Mrs. Ortago? Aye. And finally, item eight point zero five, approval of the right-of-way agreement and request for granting of permanent easement at War Hill High School. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the right-of-way agreement and request for granting of a permanent easement at War Hill High School to Virginia Electric and Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Aller, when you're ready. Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortago?
Aye.
All right, that concludes our action items. And we will move on to item nine, board member comments. I will start, Dr. Cavazos, can I start with you?
Yeah, I want to take it back to the kids. I want to make the comment that I strongly believe that reading is a fundamental skill of all students. And I believe every child in WJCC school district should be able to read by the third grade. And that's not the case today. And I think it's the responsibility to achieve, to achieve this goal should be shared by all the teachers, all the administratious, administrators, and above all, the parents themselves. And I was really delighted to see these young kids at Laurel Lane teach their younger sibling, other younger students in that school. I thought that was really excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Ms. Chen, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to mention that I really enjoyed some school visits since we last met. So Berkeley Middle School showed us their amazing care closet and how they're providing for all of their students' needs. At Jamestown High School and Lafayette High School. They did mention that, that we do have an influx as a sort of national issues, an influx of, of non-English speaking students, and they have embraced the students. And we, we heard firsthand about how our students are doing well, all of them. And I will say, my own, my own children as well have talked about how they've had new classmates that come from different countries and have different cultures and speak different languages, and they've been welcomed by the teachers, and there have not been any disruptions in the classroom. So I just thought that I would point that out from personal experience as well as as a school board member visiting many of the schools and hearing firsthand. So I just want to say thank you to our students for their care, for their commitment, and to our teachers as well.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Uh, Mr. Riffle, over to you.
Okay. Well, I liked Ms. Chen, I also went to some schools, actually only with Ms. Chen. I did almost everything I did as a school member since we last met with, with Ms. Chen. So we would, it's been fun. We went to the Williamsburg, the Special Ed Department and SEAC event this past weekend. That was cool, they had like little tiny little petting zoo and trains. And it would seem like it was a great time for, for families to, to come and enjoy the space at Lafayette High School. And I, I think it was a great event, and I'd love to see more community partners come and embrace our students in that. You know, there's some empty tables there, it'd be great to keep seeing that event grow more and more each year. And then I enjoyed my school visits, that's really cool to kind of talk to principals and see students like in the hallways and then, you know, and enjoy listening to bands and seeing facilities like the new tennis courts at Lafayette High School, which don't have lights, which is something I learned, that, because that's controlled by the school system and not by the local gov. So I'm interested to see how that partnership can be developed so that the public can use things that they purchased for things like that. So it's important for us to visit these facilities, to hear from their staff and to, to come and enjoy kind of what students see every day and see some of the challenges that they're facing. So I appreciate Dr. Heron and, and, and Ms. Aller for helping us schedule those things. And I look forward to my board meeting tomorrow with WHRO, which will be fun, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mr. Hosang, any final comments?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Dr. Swan from Laurel Lane for coming and with her presentation. It was great seeing everything that they're doing there. And being retired military, I'm hoping that we, as a school board, can do something regarding the attendance policy for at least the military personnel or military students of, or children of military personnel, especially if they're going to be deployed where we can, if you want to say, make an exception for them to have some extra days to be away from the school so that they can be with their parent before they're deployed. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Hunley?
Yes, also, I attended some school visits. So Mr. Riffle and I went to James River. And they are, no, no, I did the same thing, I forgot Ms. Ortago last week. But they're getting ready for Dolphin March Madness, just like we're getting ready for March Madness for basketball. So their staff is going to play the fire department. They have jerseys, they have cheerleaders, and it's Friday at five o'clock, if you can make it. That's going to be so much fun. And Mr. Riffle gifted the fourth and fifth grade students with Virginia and USA cute little stands for their flags, so, from his, his job. So that was very appreciative. Then I went with Ms. Chen also to, to Berkeley. And I do believe recess is very important, and I want to thank their administrative staff because they allow their children to, after lunch, go out and burn some energy. And they supervise that, though, so it's a little different. But it, it, it has benefited the children as they come back in. Also, went with Mr. Hosang to Stonehouse, my old stomping grounds. And we met an awesome SRO, Mr. Hill. And he has this office with all kinds of little superhero gadgets in there. And so it's just great to see the relationships that our SROs have with our students. And also, they're keeping the school safe, and, and it's, it goes hand in hand. And then Mr. Hosang and I also went to Norwich Elementary School. And we got to look at the, the back part where the new preschool, when we break ground on that, it's going to be the new preschool. And, and we looked at some of the logistics of the, I hate to say the parent pickup line because that's a bad word now, but, parent pickup line. So that was interesting, too, to just physically put my eyes on it instead of looking at a, you know, a grid with our other presentations. And then, and Mr. Riffle, don't feel bad, I did forget that I went with Ms. Ortago to Hornsby Middle School, and that's my husband's school, and I went right in his room, and I forgot to even report on it. But one thing I liked about, last year, the, all the staff did what's important to them, their why, and they wrote it up. But this time, they were able to make a bracelet, they got in the Swifty, if y'all know Taylor Swift and her little bracelets. So they made a bracelet with their why, and then they also made a bracelet for their, for another colleague. So I thought that was just a great thing to do to start the year off. And they had their play Into the Woods. So as you know, I missed Berkeley's, the Addams Family, I heard it was very good. But Hornsby did Into the Woods. And it was just, it's refreshing for me, as some of you may know, I did teach here in this division for twenty-six years, kindergarten, but to see these students now in middle school and high school, it, it just blows my mind, the wonderful things that they do artistically, musically, fine arts, academically, and, and the athletics. And I'm super proud to say that I am a product that I got to teach here. And for our staff, I did read the survey today. And thank you, I know how hard that is to share, to come forward, but to share it, your stories and writing was, was just very humbling for me to see. And, and I am looking forward to finding out where we are in the process of what we're going to be able to do as far as collective bargaining, just wondering where we are in the process. And the one thing I want to say is, not, I don't believe in luck, but to say that we're lucky, that the, that the teachers love to be here, it's a blessing that they want to stay here and work here. And so whatever we can do to support that is what this board is invested in. And because we do see you, we know how hard you work, and you are our students' best hope. And so we want you to stay, and we're working on it. Just be patient, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you. One of the things that we try to teach our children is about integrity and values. And so for me to live in my integrity and my values, I can't sit on the dais and not address something that was said that is a racist trope about people who are coming from other countries and who speak other languages. And so I just want to be very clear that each of us as board members, we have our own points of view, we have our own perspectives, and we have this floor and this dais and this platform to share those. And so as my colleagues have the opportunity to share what their views are, I'm going to take that opportunity at this moment. And I just want to be very clear that saying that someone who is coming to this, who is coming to our schools, and because they are Spanish-speaking, that they are illegal and that parents should be warned about their presence in our schools is racist. It is nothing other than racist. And that is not something that I, that point of view does not represent my point of view as a school board member. And I want it to be very clear that that is not a position that I have ever heard us take as Williamsburg, Jamestown County. We are here to educate children, all children. Their immigration status, their parents' immigration status, that is not what we are here for. We are here for education. And there's a lot of conversation around the point of this flag that's behind us, right? Bring us your tired, your weary, all of those that people want to put forward when it is in, maybe. in maybe towards a certain group of people, a certain type of people, what they look like, what they speak like. But if we are truly to believe what is the promise of America, it is all people. And whether they are coming here because they are fleeing things that are happening in their country, they are someone who has a skillset that we need in the U.S. and they are coming here to be able to, to provide those skills for us in the U.S. because they're, it doesn't matter why they are here, they are all here because they want a better life. And that is what we all have as human beings, is that we all want the same things. We want a better life for our children, we want a better life for ourselves, we want to be safe, we want to love our families, we want to be together with our families. And so I just want to be very clear that for me and from what I understand, our school di, division, we are not focused on your immigration status. If you have a child who is sitting in Williamsburg and Jame City County and who is of school age, register them. We are here to care for all of the children and to provide for their education. That is my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Um, in closing, I want to bring our focus back to, um, our main purpose here tonight. We, we did approve a budget and we worked actually very well together to do that. Um, I want to thank my board colleagues for all of the time, um, and conversations and ideas that were offered. Um, as a board, we are here to support the entire school division and to make the best decisions possible for all children, all staff. And it is, it is okay to have different opinions and we have times and places to express them respectfully. And then we come together as one board and continue to work on behalf of Williamsburg Jame City County students and teachers and staff. And so I just want to say that in closing, that, that that's what our focus will remain, uh, moving forward. And, um, so just want to thank everyone for the work that, that you all, that all the senior staff to get us to this point tonight. And, um, I think I will leave it at that. I hope you all have a very good evening. And I will, um, move on to, just announce some upcoming events. The Policy Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning, um, March twentieth at eight thirty a.m. in Room Two-O-three, School Board and Central Office. Uh, the Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on March twenty-seventh at three thirty p.m. in Room Three Hundred of the Annex. Um, the Special Education Advisory Committee will meet next on April eleventh at six thirty p.m. in Room Three Hundred of the Annex. And our upcoming meetings, uh, our next closed session will be on, um, April ninth, starting at four p.m. in Room Three Hundred, followed by our work session and action items also April ninth at four thirty p.m. in Room Three Hundred of the Annex. After that, the next closed session will be on April sixteenth at five forty-five p.m. in Room Three Hundred of the Annex, um, followed by our regular meeting again here in James Clear Middle School Gymnasium, that's, um, April sixteenth at six thirty p.m. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.